While the meeting of the North Reading School Committee is together, regular meeting. First order of business is always public input. Anything that somebody has that's not on the agenda, none will move on to us who report. Tonight we have Carolyn Theadman.
So for academic matters, midterms, we've just made for an end of the first school. So this week will be the bachelor's or degree of master's day. So because it just ended, the third quarter has just started. And course selections will be this week and next week. So head of conference will be going to individual classes and talking to the juniors, sophomores, and freshmen about selecting courses for our students. Senior to get back to second system college. The SATs are placed in the past by many first years, so a lot of junior students will scan the bachelor's day and mark it. For finance, John has been marching our power. They have to approach the customer, they're trying to lead the month at the bottom of the year. We're seeing a little opportunity. Our girls' basketball is week four and the next game is home tomorrow, very kind of a boys' basketball nine one and the next game is class. Both boys and girls are tracking what they can like change yet. So this is very good for the girls. The shuttle hurdle team on the left side actually come by the nationals, so they do a lot of field for much. And the boys' hockey team is also unplayed and they showed a good spacing game with ties with their son, they're having a good one game. So our most recent one to the scientists, there's a lot of scientists, we must roll and the next one is their name. In our career speaking series, hospitality, hotel manager from the Marriott Hotel will be speaking to those interested in career hospitality and that'll be taking place on the 26th of August. Mr. and Mrs. Jeff Sinna has begun at our school. So Stu Coe is sponsoring a graphic design competition to create a new logo for this competition. And there's going to be on the spot a set this day on January 24th and a representative from the middle school community will be visiting. And for my student work sample, I chose a doctorate based question essay that we've been doing to AP US history. And so recently you've been trying to simulate the AP exam environment, so we've been having different essays in different time constraints that we have to complete these essays in. This is our first doctorate based question and we talked a lot about two different things that the AP examiners will be looking for, like contextualization and synthesis and things like that. So this is our first practice over that.
Chair. So on Sunday, Boston Globe had a big story on the track teams and I think the headline was North Reading Track Rules. It was great. The track athletes and the track coaches have just done a tremendous job at the school. And are you on the track teams?
I'm actually not for the winter.
Oh, just running this, just running this spring?
Yeah.
To fall three days.
I used to do winter, but I took a break this season.
I also wanted to mention the hockey team. They dropped out this week for some reason. They were the only Division II team in the Globe's top 20 last weekend. Hockey night in Boston, which ranks all schools in Eastern Massachusetts, North Reading is the number two team in Division II for hockey night in Boston. One other thing I wanted to just raise with the middle school, they have their play next week, next weekend. Alice in Wonderland is next Friday and Saturday. And you can get tickets online. I think if you go to the Hornet Productions website or Friends of Hornet Productions, you can get the tickets online. I just got mine today for Friday night, so. And the middle school does a great job. So I know you're at a middle school, so you're going to have that. But I just wanted to point that out.
If you haven't been to a play at the Blue Farm At Center, I strongly recommend you go. Just go to the benefit, probably see the production, great acting and the singing and for all the lighting and the sets. It's a great take, so I hope everybody gets a chance to go there and support the little school drama club. The high school's already had their first play this year, but it's a great, great take.
The performances have all changed. They've gone from the, what used to be like the high school kind of performance, it's now gone by the middle school. And the high school performance is a lot like professional. So it's kind of a quantum leap within the facilities.
Mr. Chair, one other thing, this is slightly away from Carolyn, but just for a second while we have all the parents here and because before they leave, they have to take their children home, I just want to ask all of you to be vigilant when it comes to state funding of education. The governor made a big deal this weekend about his historic budget for education, which at the most will give us $20 more per pupil next year, which is less than we got this year. So that's how historic it is. Please, please, please stay in contact with Brad Jones and Bruce Tar and with the State House. Write letters, make phone calls. We need more money to run the schools, not only this town, but in every town in the state. And the state and the federal government do not provide the funds we need, which is why, one of the reasons, in addition to beautiful new high school and middle school, that North Reading has a pretty high tax rate, because you just don't get the support. So I just ask that you pay attention to that. I think the governor's budget will be announced, I think it's this Wednesday. Usually there are changes, there are always changes when it goes through the House and the Senate, but I just ask that you watch that and do all you can to help us get more funds to run our schools.
And as of right now, we don't think an alarm is supposed to be public knowledge. We're looking at a potential million dollar deficit in FY18 budget as we speak right now. So we have, that's the loan servicing budget. So between now and June town meeting, we have to figure a way to close that gap. So I think listen to what Mel's saying and we need all the support in that.
And when Mel says, "We need more money," we'd like to have that come from the state level, not from you.
Not from you.
Right.
Well, it's kind of coming from the middle school.
It's just come from the local level. But you're going to give it up to the state no matter what. It's nice to get a little bit of it back. Are we further? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to take our agenda out of order a little bit. Normally, by the way, don't bang the gals quite that hard. Running for reelection, that's what I'm thinking.
He doesn't care what he does, so we're going to murder him. False eye on him.
So we're going to go on to new business and the presentation of the Bachelor School of Bachelor School.
Good evening, welcome to the school committee to the annual visit to the LE Bachelor School. I appreciate, you know, the work that it takes to go and set up somewhere else and get the videos set up. We get to see a little bit about what our school is up to this school year. This evening, one of the things that we wanted to bring, it's funny you talk about how the production value has come up, and I think this will be a good lead in to understand that as the music teachers, not only Ms. Larson here at the Bachelor School, but I know that music teacher at the other elementary schools are providing more and more opportunities for students to experience music beyond the question of their performance. And so Ms. Larson wanted to bring together some kids who are available to take time out of their busy schedules, away from their homework, some committed parents who got you here to support you, and they're going to share you. So can we give a nice round of applause for Ms. Larson?
So we're going to sing three short songs for you. We have some members from the Bachelor Chorus. We have our largest chorus this year, 75 students, but we have about 30 here today. And the fourth graders are going to start out with some ukulele, which we've been working on in general music class. And this first song is a spiritual called Yonder Come Day. Let's make sure how many of our listeners. (Singing) Yonder, yonder, I want to hear you go.
Yonder come day, day is breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is breaking. Sun is rising in my soul. The trees are green and the air is sweet. The good earth sings underneath my feet. I point my feet down freedom line. Walking that road, I'm feeling fine. Yonder, 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 yonder. Yonder, yonder, sun is rising in my soul. Yonder, day is breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is breaking. Sun is rising in my soul.
One, two, one, two, here you go.
Yonder come day, day is breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is breaking. Sun is rising in my soul.
Nice job. Great. Take time in life. So first baseline over here. Quickly zip this up. For my first. Testing, testing, testing. So this next song is a Liberian folk song called Take Time in Life. And they're singing in three-part acapella, which is actually very impressive for elementary schoolers. And this song features a lot of our soloists here.
(Singing) As I was passing by, my mother called to me. And she said to me, "You better take time in life."
You better take time in life. You better take time in life. You better take time in life, 'cause you've got far away to go.
As I was passing by, my mother called to me. And she said to me, "You better take time in life." You better take time in life. You better take time in life. You better take time in life, 'cause you've got far away to go.
As I was passing by, my father called to me. And he said to me, "You better take time in life."
You better take time in life. You better take time in life. You better take time in life, 'cause you've got far away to go.
Passing by, called to me. Said to me, take time in life.
As I was passing by, my brother called to me. And he said to me, "You better take time in life."
You better take time in life. You better take time in life. You better take time in life, 'cause you've got far away. Okay.
Passing by, called to me. Said to me, take time in life.
As I was passing by, my sister called to me. And she said to me, "You better take time in life."
You better take time in life. You better take time in life. Better take time in life, 'cause you've got far away to go.
As I was passing by, my mother called to me. And she said to me, "You better take time in life." You better take time in life. Better take time in life. You better take time in life, 'cause you've got far away to go.
Nice job. I had to listen to your bad solo five minutes ago, which is why I'm a little giggling. Can we search for one candle? We have one more for you. So we're singing part two. Make sure you're on this side. Part one, make sure you're on this side. It starts with the solos, right?
(Singing) One candle, one light, burning clear throughout the night. One candle, one symbol of peace. One candle was one, now a glimmer has begun. Two candles, two symbols of peace. Don't I know, don't I know, you'll be stronger, stronger. In the glow of candlelight I see. Don't I know, don't I know, you'll be stronger, stronger. Peace for you and me. (Singing) Three candles, two candles, shining stronger than before. Five candles, six candles, burn bright. More candles shining, six sparks of hope begin. Each candle increasing the lights. Don't I know, don't I know, you'll be stronger, stronger. In the glow of candlelight I see. Don't I know, don't I know, you'll be stronger, stronger. Peace for you and me. Your candlelight with light will radiate and shine, grow each stronger for all the world to see. You and me. Don't I know, don't I know, you'll be stronger, stronger. In the glow of candlelight I see. Don't I know, don't I know, you'll be stronger, stronger. Peace for you and me. Peace for you. And peace.
Thank you so much. I guess I really appreciate all the parents getting your kids here. And this is about, what, a quarter of our chorus, so it was pretty amazing to see them at the winter concert. I was really proud of them. And I also want to really thank the Bachelor Parents Organization for buying us those ukuleles two years ago. They've been such a wonderful asset to my curriculum and we love them. So thank you so much. Thank you, students. We're going to wait until the other students. Do you want me to sit on the bridge until the other students are done? Okay. We're going to sit until the fourth grade speakers are, yeah.
Boys and girls, excellent job. I'll tell you, I've been to all the concerts and that was like going to a jazz house, you know, you get so close and you get to hear their voices so well. It was excellent. Thank you.
Just wanted to ask a question. I mean, the ukulele lessons, are they after school, are they during the day?
Well, you could shoot.
Yeah, so we do that in general music, so when they come to music twice a week, we do a mixture of a lot of things, you know, world music, ukulele, recorder, keyboards in fifth grade, so lots of singing.
I didn't want to show my brightness here, but I prefer the ukulele over the recorder. I bet you're a student.
Yeah, maybe some of the parents do too, but we have very good recorder players here at all the Bachelors.
I think one of the greatest stress that we have when you come here every year is decide what to share with you. And we try to get all over the curriculum with the performing arts, the fine arts, but then we also like to take time to get you up to speed on what some of the academics in the curriculum is. So today I have Ms. Johnson and Ms. Hewitt, fourth grade classroom teachers, and Ms. Lindsay, a digital learning specialist. We're going to share some of the things they've been working on in fourth grade.
Hi, I'm Lori Johnson, fourth grade teacher here at the Batch. I'm one of four fourth grade teachers. And as you said, I'm here with Mrs. Hewitt, one of my teammates. And the fourth graders tonight are going to share with you a little bit about how we integrate technology into our classroom and how we use it to enhance our curriculum.
In Ms. Johnson's fourth grade science class, we studied matter and energy. Did you know matter is never created or destroyed? It is only transferred from one kind to another. After studying different forms of energy, we made an ebook using the Book Creator app on the iPads. First with a partner, we explored our school building to find different kinds of energy systems.
Once we decided on a system, we took a picture of it and imported it into our ebook. Next, we typed in what we had learned and observed about the system. We identified the types of energy being used and the different energy transfers that take place. Because we were using the iPads, we were then able to add narration to our ebook. It was fun hearing our voices. Here's a part of our energy system ebook.
In science, we are learning about energy systems. Here are a few examples.
I hope you learn more about energy systems from our movie.
This computer is a current electrical system. This energy system was found in Mrs. Johnson's fourth grade class on the fourth floor. Current electricity is transferred and turned into heat, light, energy, and when keys are typed, it is mechanical energy.
This is Duncan G.
And I'm Dawson Duffley.
This is an energy system. It is an electric stapler.
It is located in the computer lab office on the third floor. It is plugged in.
Solar transfers current electricity to mechanical, then sound energy when it's needed.
This is an energy system. It is a copying machine. It is located on the fourth floor in the copying room.
The printer uses current electricity when it is plugged in.
When the printer prints paper, it transfers current electricity to heat, energy, light energy, sound energy, and mechanical energy.
This story is by Tyler and Ari and Morgan Datares.
So I teach science twice with my classroom and Mrs. Hewitt's classroom. We switch for science and social studies. So they each had a partner and made a slide in both classes and then watched, presented, and then we got the email at home, all social parents, for them to see their hard work. All right.
This year, the North Reading Elementary Schools began a new math program called Urimica. In connection with the curriculum, we work on a digital math program called CERN. CERN aligns with our grade level math units or modules. It begins modules in instructional video called Math Chat. The videos introduce new concepts and model skills we are about to learn. Then it allows us to practice the skills and move at our own pace, giving us immediate feedback on our answers and problem solving. There are times when we do work in a corresponding notebook and it also quizzes us on fact fluency. We can use CERN as a whole class or in small stations during our math block. We use it on the Chromebooks in our classrooms. Here's what I suppose CERN must look like.
So each student logs in, they have their own username and password. And again, some of us, we can do it the whole class at one time or do small math stations while you're working in small groups. Please. Okay. And each student also has their own set of headphones now in class so that they can listen to the videos from the back.
Did you ever wonder what happens to the area and perimeter of a rectangle if we make it twice as long? What about three times as long? What about two times as long and three times as wide? Today, we're going to explore the relationship between area and perimeter and see if we can discover any patterns.
All right, so that's a sample of what the Math Chat looks like in the beginning. And then students jump on and work with their lessons. So Vanessa here. So Vanessa here is just going to show you where she is. One great thing about this program is the teachers can go in and set what module the student is working at and it can be differentiated. So if some students didn't get everything in Module 1, you can keep them on Module 1 till they keep practicing. And, hi Vanessa, could you just fill it in and show you how she does that? Did you get immediate feedback here? We don't have our paper here. So two times length plus width, right? Huh? Say it again. Yes, that's one more. Okay, so it's like, that's good. Okay, good. And then the area is. And then it just continues along with the lesson. And the questions get harder as they go. And then there's also a section that follows the sprints in the Urimica program, which quizzes them on fact fluency and its time. And we can check on these teachers to see how long they're spending on each problem and what the success rate is. And my students who just woke up around 3:00, I just wanted to be, all right, so this is Carly Hudson, who spoke earlier, Alana Hannan, Dawson Duffley, and Vanessa Steidmeyer. As Sean mentioned, my name is Chris Lindia, we're one of the digital learning specialists. And I focus on the introduction to programming and robotics strand at each elementary school. And last year if you were here, you hopefully remember, we had the first graders on the floor with the V-bots. And that's how we introduced the youngest students to programming and robotics. And then once they have this foundation, the second and third graders use an iPad app called Scratch Junior that was developed by MIT faculty. And we showed that last year as well with the, students made a Scratch Junior project programming characters to share what they learned about planets. And so now we thought it would be neat to show what, now that they've learned that, what the fourth graders are doing with, it's actually a full version of Scratch that is on the computer. So they're getting to see all these different devices and learn about them. And so Raffi is going to share how the fourth graders are building on the programming skills they developed. And we want you to just sort of see all the programming that went into it. So right from here, you can see all that is done and Chris is going to do us info.
This fall, our digital learning time was spent creating a project that was connected to our social studies curriculum. We brought a state poster project into the 21st century by using the Scratch programming software to share what we learned about one of the states. We used the library databases and books to research our assigned state during digital learning and social studies time. We then learned how to program in Scratch and use the blocks in this program to have characters or sprites move and share information about the state. As you will see, a lot of programming went into this project. Here is my Scratch project about the state of Kentucky.
So this is the programming for the first break. And this is the programming for the first sprite. And then this is the programming for the second sprite that he's going to talk to. And then this is the programming for the last sprite.
Hello, I am Matt Bevan, the state governor of Kentucky, or the Bluegrass State. Kentucky is located in the southeast region of the United States. Frankfort is the capital city of Kentucky, but is not big at all compared to its other cities like Louisville. Kentucky borders Indiana and Ohio to the north, Tennessee to the south, Virginia and West Virginia to the east, and Missouri and Illinois to the west. Hi, Matt. Hi, welcome to the beautiful Appalachian plateaus overlooking the Appalachian Mountains. Wow, it's beautiful. Can you tell me more about it? Well, the Appalachian Mountains range is famous and stretches across most of the southeast. It is one of the most beautiful sights in all of Kentucky. No doubt about that. I have to leave for I have much to show and not much time. Good to meet you. Goodbye. Oh, wow, that was gorgeous. Hi, Matt, it is I, Daniel Booney. How are you? Hi, Daniel, tell the people where we are. This is the trail that I use to lead settlers into Kentucky. This is now a historic and national park of the United States. It is called the Cumberland Gap. It is beautiful. How long did you spend traveling this trail? Well, it took about 25 years since Thomas Walker first entered the trail until I founded Boonsboro. Well, thank you for your time, Daniel, but I must leave. Goodbye, Daniel. This is the Kentucky Derby. It is held once every year here in Kentucky. The Kentucky Derby is the most famous horse race in the world, host riders from all over the world. The Derby attracts many people and has been held for more than 50 years. If you are looking for something to do in Kentucky, definitely take the Kentucky Derby into consideration. Well, I hoped you liked Kentucky. And until next time, I am Matt Bevan.
This represented several weeks of work. How long did it take that, Chris?
I'd say like six weeks.
Six weeks of work? Yeah. So and Raffi did a fabulous job. And then some social studies too as well. Did a fabulous job. So it's Raffi over.
Once again, I'd like to thank the teachers and the students for their time. Before I discharge them and let them go, did anybody have any questions for any of the teachers and the students?
All of the children were very composed. You know, I remember being that, it wasn't that long ago, but being young like them, my voice would quiver, and they had such good control. Their voices were beautiful, great posture, eye contact. It was very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for taking the time.
We're going to clear a room, huh?
Yeah. Where do we go? Who are you and why are you standing? Oh, sit next. Oh, okay. I can't imagine anybody standing.
Well, you know, we're not blood cast life night, so there will be a big crowd because the demand, you know, the ratings are out. The people are here tonight to see us live.
But this is truly something that we do very well in this town. Just for that reason, you end up by getting these kids older. We see the high school kids come through, and they have no fear of getting up. It really is true.
You're right, this is a good byproduct of going to the schools. It's a good reason to do it. That kids get to speak first.
This is a 21st century skill. This is a 21st century skill. There's also a 19th century and an 18th century skill. But we particularly pick up on it and bring it up to speed. I really appreciate that.
I think of any student that doesn't have a presentation that has faults. But I mean, clearly it shows that you have to disturb the school during that type of thing, whether it's in the classroom or in a, you know, school-wide meeting. Because I doubt this is the first time you've done that.
I mean, I'm going way back, but I can't recall giving the opportunity to get up and speak on a problem. You can't even think of it.
I'll tell you one thing, and I didn't want to go over the parents here, but for some sick reason, I was watching a 2007 school committee do another live.
You got a problem. No, you got a problem.
That was the year, that was the year when we cut all bands at the Middleland High School. We cut almost all music completely. When Dr. Trove came to us, we had no money, the override failed. And none of this stuff would be happening if we were still in that situation. And that's why I brought up tonight about the money or the budget. Because we just can't go back. There are a lot of school districts in this state that don't have the music program that we have in our school system.
Music and art, too.
Exactly. Art, too.
Right. We did an art.
And we need to continue to invest in those areas. So we have fully educated, multi-dimensional students that graduate from our school system.
The multi-dimensional is part of the 21st century skill set. Because we don't know what the skills are going to be needed. Or we don't know what the jobs are 10 years or 15 years from now. We do know what the skill sets are. And they're always the same.
I think we've only started to visually recover from those kinds of things. I really do. It's taken a while.
The band is just starting to get bigger at the high school.
Nine years, Tony.
The band was down to like nine or 10 people, students at one point. I think over a couple of years, we haven't even, I don't know if we even had it.
It was very small. Yeah. We just recently started to rebound the last couple of years. You're right.
Continuing under this, I mean, that's Leah, my host. I hope I did that right. Public drug-free community's grant project.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, while we just get in the way of the podium, just for a way of introduction. So you might recall when we had Lady Luckowitz present to you when the community received that very sizable grant, the community's grant. So one of the positive byproducts of that is that Leah is now the person that has been hired by the town. I had the good fortune of sitting on the interview committee that ultimately selected Leah, and she has done a very nice job in a short period of time integrating herself into the community. So she's here tonight to seek the permission of the committee to administer surveys to students at our middle school and high school copies of which are either packet. This is a, Leah, you correct me if I'm wrong, this is a requirement of the grant that Leah plans to baseline data. And I'll turn it over to you to speak to the committee board of the needs and how you plan to approach this.
Yes. And I think that, I don't know if that's what. But again, I'm Leah, the project coordinator for the drug community's grant that we just received. So, and just a quick, brief overview of me, I'm a licensed certified social worker. I used to be at a place in the Beverly Hills hospital. I worked with a range of different clients and clientele, families, a lot of sick people, different ranges of, you know, what their bones were, what they needed. And then I also did a placement at an elementary school. So I worked with great skate group. All the range of different things, social skills, behavioral modification, gen ed, planning, any kind of education plans, parenting skills. So I've done a few different things. But this main, the purpose of this grant is for substance use prevention of youth and to kind of collect data just to see exactly where that is, you know, where we need to work on prevention and then how to implement those things. And we're hoping to do grade 6 through 12, and it would be a survey, which I believe you guys have copies of. So it's pretty much about youth, and then also how they feel about the use, how they think their parents feel about any kind of drug use, and specific to what kind of drugs we're using, where you're getting this from, where you're using, when you're using, you know, the parents would think about it. There are a lot of different questions, and what you have in front of you is the exact survey that we would be conducting, we'll be giving out. And we're hoping to do it within a day or two, just how it works out, what works out. I've met with both principals, all the principals, middle school and high school. So we're thinking maybe a power block, we may hopefully do a whole day or maybe not for two days. We're going to do pen, pencil, I mean, paper and pencil for the kids. And then we're hoping to send the emails, I'm sorry, the surveys via email to the parents. It would be through, we'd send them a link and they just click on it and then give them access to it and they will get it and do it. So that's what we're hoping for. And we want to do it in person with the kids, so we can kind of have that chance set aside and we'll just get it done as opposed to emailing that. Because that was a question I received, why can't you send it to the kids? Which is a great question, but I think we better just have it more contained and just try to get it done all at once. Because we really want to get this, we need the data, we want to get it, and we want to get the most accurate data that we can and, you know, full circle. And then, of course, if parents aren't comfortable with kids doing this, or children, the kids in general, or students in general, they can opt out. So that's what we're hoping for. And again, this is part of, we have to be most deliberate. And our baseline idea is, right now, there was some data was collected past year, but it was kind of all grouped together and not divided out by grade, which is great, but it's really not that helpful because there is definitely a difference between kids in maybe sixth grade and what their drug use might be compared to 12th grade. And of course, some kids don't use drugs at all. But, you know, the research has shown that kids more so in high schools are more susceptible to it. So we know like starting earlier, it's kind of heavier concentrated in high school. So we're looking to check on that data and then be able to implement strategies and prevention activities and whatever we need to do to hopefully combat that. So that's the plan right now. Of course, I'm seeking approval from you guys to know we do that. Kind of the gist of it. Do you guys have any questions?
I was just going to ask, with this actual, this exact survey that you're using, have you had an opportunity to look at the data that's come back on this type of survey itself from other sources and determine whether or not it's been as helpful to you as you would like it to be?
I mean, I've looked at samples. I haven't actually looked at any other communities' data and people, this is a pride survey, and anybody can use any survey they want. So no, I can't answer your question, no, I haven't.
I was just curious as to the questions. So when you get this back, it's going to be kind of a learning process for you based on this particular survey as to what type of data you get back and how you're going to use it.
Sure, yeah, pretty much, exactly. And we have, this is the first, this is the first time we're working for it as well. So yeah, it's branded.
So two questions. Do you need to get a certain percentage of students and parents responding in order to continue to be qualified for the grant? And two, who is this data going to after you get it?
As far as I know, no, because we're just trying to collect the data, so I don't think it would hinder anything, the grant at all. And then that data, it's going to, I mean, I'm not exactly sure. No, we're going to do the surveys, send it back to Pride. They're going to kind of analyze it and give us a whole markup of it. And then, I don't know, I'm honestly not sure. I don't know if we've been, I don't want to share it, but I don't know what realm of public knowledge it goes to.
No, I mean, does it have to go back to like the federal government, to the state, wherever we got the grant from? Does the data, this is required by the grant that we do this, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, so yeah, that's part of, that's part of what we're going to be reporting on. We have two, it's, we have two progress reports that we have to do for the year. One's actually going to be due in February. We don't have this data to report on since we're just going to hopefully administer it in February. So our progress, it's called a progress report in August, is what then we'll report this data to a grant.
And is it a state grant or federal?
It's federal.
Are there questions that a student can ignore?
Yep, yep.
And that doesn't necessarily validate?
I mean, it's, we hope that they would answer them, just because we're trying to get the most valid data. But yes, I mean, of course, there's always, yeah, it might not be relevant or stupid.
How will we, in terms of the opt-out, will that, when we notify parents, will we notify parents first that your student's going to be asked to take this survey? And you have the option of opting out? Will that be made clear upfront?
Yep, I believe it's going to be an email or a note home, and then we're going to have a copy of the survey and this letter that parents can come in and come into the school, look at the survey if they'd like. And then they would need to let the school know that they don't want their child to take the survey. And then, of course, the child can say, I don't want to do it.
Does the child have to have the parent's permission to opt out?
Well, I think it would be, like in the school, if they're, I would say no. If they're, you know, going to sit down during Power Block and don't want to do it, I would say that's their choice. But if the parents want them doing it, the parent would be able to make that decision. Any other questions?
What's the timeframe to doing it?
Administrative or, we're hoping to do it in February. And then the turnaround, I think hopefully we get back within a month or two or less than that. It is, and we have to order the service too, which usually we're supposed to order them about two weeks in advance of when we want to administer it. So as it is right now, in the early stages, it means in May, February, it's that. So what are you saying for February in general?
Again, I might have missed this, but is this, this is being offered to every student in grade 6 to 12?
Exactly, yeah.
Every student?
Yeah.
And you're going to encourage them to take it, encourage parents to do it?
Yes, yeah, we're going to hope that they're going to. It's, you know, it's optional, of course. But yeah, because it would really help our data and the grant and the information that we can be.
Tell them that federal grant is involved. We need the money. I think it's good. Look at that, that's fairly comprehensive. Are there any other questions?
I move to allow the administration of the Pride questionnaire for grade 6 to 12 and Pride parent engagement and perception survey.
Seconded, any further discussion? Are you done? All in favor? Aye. Or opposed?
Thank you so much. I have to hurry to the classroom, just for the contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. All the way in this same line, Mr. Haddad, with his presentation as well. Will you serve it in?
Get his toolbox.
Mr. Bruce Allen.
That's right, I will be disappointed, you know that.
Thank you for the invitation. It's my annual state of the millions report. I don't sing it out there, but I like to take on the voice of the players. That is manipulative to my report. Okay, you probably have this, but we have 19 full-time employees. There's eight at the high school, three day people, and then five in the afternoon. The hours at all schools are 6:30 AM or 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM. There's three at this school, one day present, two at night, and two at the hood and two at the wing, and two employees that are 70 man, so multiple tasks. That's our 15 custodians, and two grounds maintenance workers, and the two man, that's our 19 employees.
Thank you. I want to bat for you, Wayne.
I think, you know...
We didn't even practice this.
It's a great place to work. It's still, it's a dynamic place, they write and changes rapidly and just every day there's this, it's a dynamic place.
So Wayne called you to it?
No, I did not speak to Wayne.
Just some of the, I guess maybe the more dryer stuff. The town's mild, we're a mixed program, we've been very successful with drains and pursuing any number of things over and above our budget. My report, this totally has been successful in painting. Move the special program, asbestos safety awareness training for a heat loss camera, septic system, the maintenance program, air quality testing, combustible gas detection program. We bought, we, you know, we've moved a van, we replaced a, actually we, we replaced a van, we moved it down, we moved it down, moved it down, moved it down. Now the van we have, we have a spare 7D van and one of the other vans that moved down full-time for food service. It's not 7D rated, but it went past annual inspection. We pretty much use it till it's over. From the little school, this past summer, we roofed about three quarters of 38,000 square feet of the little school roof to the state of the act called SBS book of roofing with a 20-year warranty. Pretty amazing to see the process. It was a little project, but a big school. MSBA, it's still a very fair program, under the total auspices of the state. Not unlike the building project. It's not a scale, same process, pretty powerful.
However unlike the building project, it came in on time and under budget.
Correct.
Oh, we were on time.
And Wayne didn't feel like shooting himself.
Wayne was able to maintain his sanity.
Another, another, that's a good investment the town made five years ago. We put in three water and bar condensing boilers at the little school. They are so reliable. I can go online every morning and they, they are so reliable. They're made in Kentucky. We have written on maintenance problems with them. You know, just pursuing things like that, maybe at the Wood School at some point, high efficiency, low cost, low maintenance, and just they work so incredibly well.
What's the lifespan of this? What do they say?
25 to 30 years.
Really? Because they're smaller, right? They're...
They're small, they're very compact, when they're lived, you can, you can take a walk over there.
We've seen 10 to 15 thousand dollars saved, the analytics out in the last five years.
Those are the shows behind the scenes that you know, people don't normally see, but I don't know.
Do we have those here too? We don't?
These are 1990, these are 2005, 2006. These are, these are, they're a little over efficiency, they're not condensing boilers. The high school has condensing boilers, three.
Right.
Two, three at the little. The old shell and two plate type pass iron boilers here and the hood.
So...
But they're fairly good.
Right, but at some point, when we replace them, we should replace them with, oh no, what we around back then.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
The little controls are computer-based, which is really another plus for us. We can hang the roof in home and an iPad at school, at the school. Another, less high-tech proposal is remove all the SS's floor tiles at the little school. Probably has a little bit, 12,000 square feet, floor tile. All well protected, not unsafe, we watch it closely, but we want it removed.
Can we get a grant for that, you know, are there grants for that kind of thing? Mike, you know, I have...
I've not heard of it at all.
It's just, it's, it's a real challenge for us to remove safely. We're thinking about replacing the gym floor from them, probably have some gym floor from them, it's pretty well beat up.
I would have replaced it the day after it was put in, but I wasn't in the community.
We have a proposal to replace it with similar one we have here, and one's synthetic color, we have the hood. They're resilient, they're cleanable, I mean, really hold up well.
Yeah.
This, in the summertime, this is clean and scrub, it blows.
Yeah.
Good school, we have a lot of biologic energy management controls at that school also. We're going to upgrade the gym lights at some point. Another major improvement was a two-year project, we paid almost the entire apartment worth. It's pretty well beat up, drainage issues and ice issues and so, 90% of it's done. The front water, which was heaving from ice over three years, it's been blackened up and re-cooked with concrete, not ice.
Wayne, on the lights, can we work, can you work with RMLD? Again, are there grants for that?
There are, there are.
Credits, et cetera?
But what's happening now is, the new school is all what they call THs or T5s.
Right.
These are THs. The new technology is all LED.
Well, I know Mike has been talking to, we've been talking to him.
Johnson Controls, as a proposal, they work with communities to look at things like that, replace some more energy efficient projects and, you know, finding ways to create a kind of funding for the future and saving, but it's, there's different things you can do. RMLD is a program.
One thing that shocked me about the new school is, given when it was built, I'm still at this stage shocked that they weren't LED lights that it put in.
Right.
Was it right on the...
Was it right on the cost of that, really?
It was LED.
Yeah, so a little too early, right?
Close enough.
Before they became affordable.
Right.
This school, it's in, actually maybe the 12th year, I'm not sure, it's maybe the 12th. As far as what it costs, Mr. Queen, never shy about mentioning things to me, he's not around here. As far as a portion of our budget, it doesn't consume a lot of. This is 88,000 square feet, it really, it operates well. Every, in this place, those are the six days a week, and that's a long week. It continues to be easy to maintain and doesn't consume a lot of budget. We did some roof slate and tile up the, up the main roof in 1919, going to 1920. That's, that's an all the ongoing slate new cuts and replacements. And actually, hopefully this spring, summer, we'll be upgrading the industry entries. That's original entries, that used to be the old way entries. It's a window wall. Middle school high school campus, 270,000 square feet, full operation, common gym, cafeterias, media center, performing arts center, the boilers, high capacity, highly efficient, 200, 300 ton capacity chillers, they sound when they set up, they sound gen agents. They're very high performance, we're still working out some emissions laws out, making maintenance issues, just, it's, we're still shaking things up, still shaking things up, it's taking a while. Actually, the school is, what do you understand, is, it's lead gold, so it's a trade. Latest technologies at hand, displacement ventilation, back, I think, when, maybe 2005, when we were promoting the school, maybe we were later than that, displacement ventilation, we had no idea what it was, now we do.
It wasn't air conditioning, it's conditioned air.
Conditioned air.
Oh, don't even stop.
I was, that was my favorite argument of all time, the school life project.
So a major part of that operation of the school is the automatic logic energy management system. It's very, it's very high-tech. We've been to class, we have, we have a company, a company once a month to help us operate. There's a lot of things that we could fine tune, things so fine, and if something was moving, it got off, as opposed to me, for my touching it, we try to be careful. So we brought a company once a month to go over all, a couple of issues amongst, a couple of middle school classrooms, we had trouble heating them and figuring out some things that might be wrong, and so we're still shaking things up in this building. Since, since 14, 15, this is just...
Third year at the high school.
We make, we make gains in that, but it, it makes a challenge, it does. But we have a service group with automatic logic. We work on other services. We have service groups, we always have on the elevators. We have, we run a service group that's, pest management company and under regulation where kicking up the speed with. The main, it's a maintenance attending equipment, which is very high-tech equipment. I think it's up, there's 19 roofs on a roof at that school. That's on hot air or cold air, or hot liquid or cold, it goes up the roof and distributed throughout the school. It's up on the roof.
I think Wayne's point about, you know, we're still kind of shaking and trading and trying out what things are going to fall off of what aren't. It's a tremendous learning process and I know Jerry and I and the others, we've talked to people at other communities that have built schools and the biggest issue is the HVAC system. It like takes like five or six years to even get the thing to function any way it's supposed to function.
This is not something that's only in our project.
Right.
Every project ever, it's always the HVAC system.
Yep.
And the balancing of it and getting all of the wrinkles worked out, because these systems are very, very complex.
I think part of our challenge is finding companies, they may say they're qualified to work this way, but we're finding out many times hard where maybe they're not qualified as they could be assuming. And we find companies that are fully qualified.
You can actually get a small, small scale picture of that if you go around your own home with a thermometer, put a thermometer in every room and check the temperature in every room and find out that they're all the same. Everything is, is a little off, up and down, and when you get something as complex as a school, a major building, it's difficult.
So I guess I finished my rubber part, I was saying the last sentence, it's a little mundane, but it doesn't change from day to day. Clean is clean, safe is safe, warm is warm and dry is dry. They don't change. It's a daily challenge. You can high-tech all you want, but clean is clean. If it's safe, it's safe. If it's warm, it's warm and dry is dry. So that's, that's a daily challenge. It doesn't go away, it doesn't, it doesn't change from year to year. It changes from season to season, man. It's always there.
And I'm glad you didn't add pool.
Well, I'm trying to find, I'm going to get a little piece to put in.
One question, dry is much better. Dry is much better.
One question on the dry is dry. You know, we have had a few leaks at the high school, middle school. Are we 100% set there or are they still...
I can answer, Wayne, you can answer.
Because we did have a leak recently in the, in the, in the straights, strata boxes.
Skylight. How challenging this is, is that one company's response, well, a one company, 270,000 square feet, that's white rubber.
Right.
This company buys skylights from a supplier. They mount them on a framework, they mount them on a roof. And we recently found that one of the skylights are bleeding and causing damage inside the building.
Right.
So there's some of this going. Well, who's open? The skylight guy owns it, but wouldn't put it on. Who covers it? You know, call them on, you water test it, it's pretty, still within that framework, but it's not mine, it's yours.
Right. But that's fixed, that area is fixed as far as we know?
It is.
Well, we might know it in the next two days.
Well, that's, we recently, we believe it was, and I think you're right.
We've got a big test coming tonight.
Right, tonight, tomorrow's.
At all the schools.
Right.
We can have it in three days.
Right. Hopefully the little school will get no leaking.
At least in the new part. Put on the roof.
That's true.
And I do want to just add, you know, the leak is, it's minimal.
No, I know.
And the interior damage was minimal.
But it might look, maybe it looks worse than...
It's actually been fixed.
It has?
And the interior worked on last year.
Because it aggravates the...
It was aggravating me too. We got, we actually had a painter come out and he repaired it. Within 48 hours he did the work.
Excellent.
It was very expensive. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just a little comment about while Wayne was here. You know, I don't, it's no secret how committed Queen is to his work, does a wonderful job, extremely, extremely committed to his work. That's his staff. The, the middle high school campus has really, I think, opened the eyes of a lot of us in what its needs are, the sophistication of systems. And Wayne has really borne the brunt of a lot of that and it has required a significant amount of his time to be dedicated on that building as we learn, as we grow. And I think we're in, you know, we're continuing to learn, but I think the direction, kind of the trajectory has been a positive one. We're learning and it's been, you know, I think we're, we're coming to a good place. You know, the growth has been there and I think that's a good thing. I don't think it, it should go unnoticed though, that because so much of Wayne's time and effort has gone to the middle school and the high school, a lot of other people have had to assume responsibility at our elementary schools. And that includes the principals of each of those three schools as well as the custodial staff. They have had to go without Wayne, so to speak, to a degree that I don't think that they were used to because so much has been, has been consumed at the middle high school. So I want to just acknowledge that, you know, it's been a kind of a district effort to make sure that the resources were put toward making sure that our beautiful new middle high school has, has come to an operational place that we wanted to be at, but that there has been some, some challenges and some extra energy put into the, the elementary schools and that effort is appreciated. Not a day goes by where it's very rare that Wayne and I don't have a conversation about something that's going on at the middle high school. And again, he's very dedicated and seeks to really provide the best learning environment in all of our schools. I just, I want to publicly acknowledge that.
I get very few comments from other students about elementary saying, you never hear. But we have a rapid reaction, you know, if something happens, I don't get aware of it. And trying, trying to treat it like pretty soon the same, the same plane, you know, it doesn't consume a lot of time. It's high-tech. The job used to be like this, now it's come like this, a couple of years, it's up and done. It is very, very challenging to stay up with. We've got tremendous support, but it's...
Wait, one more. I do have, you know, this...
Now that Wayne, Michael has pitched in an awful lot here.
With Wayne here, he may not be able to answer this question. I know there's been issues at the high school gymnasium with the shot clock. I don't know if you've been, right, we'll loop on that.
I think we did...
It really, it operates well. Every, in this place, there wasn't any six days a week. That's a long week. Continues to be easy to maintain and doesn't consume a lot of other things. We did some roof slate tile up the main roof in nineteen nineteen, going into nineteen twenty. That's an ongoing slate new cut. And actually, hopefully, this spring, summer, we'll be upgrading the industry entries. That's original entries. That used to be the old way entries. It's a window wall. Middle School, Middle School High School campus, two hundred and seventy thousand square feet, full operation. Common gym, cafeterias, media center, performing arts center, the boilers, high capacity, highly Two, three hundred ton capacity chillers. They sound when they set up, they sign jet engines. They're very high performance. We're still working out some emissions from them, making maintenance issues. We're still shaking things up. Still shaking through the walls. It's taking a while. Actually, the school is, what do you understand, is lead gold. Latest technological advances, displacement ventilation. Back, I think, maybe two thousand and five, promoting the school, maybe later on that, displacement ventilation, we had no idea what it was. Now we do.
It wasn't air conditioning, it's conditioned air.
Conditioned air.
Oh, don't even stop.
I were. That was my favorite argument of all time at the school.
So, a major part of that operation of the school is automated logic energy management system. It's very, it's very high tech. We've been to class, we have a company, a company once a month to help us operate. There's a lot of things that we can fine tune, things so fine, and if something was a little bit off, as opposed to me, for my touching it. We try to be careful. So, we brought a company once a month to go over all, couple of issues among, a couple of middle school classrooms, we had trouble feeding them, and figuring out some things that might be wrong. So, we're still shaking things up. It's been, since fourteen, fifteen.
Third year at the high school.
We make gains in that. It makes a challenge, it does. But we have a service crew with automated logic. We work on other services. We have service crew, we always have on the elevators. We have, we run our service crew that's a pest management company and under regulation where kicking up the speed with. The main, it's made of synthetic equipment, which is very high tech. There's nineteen roofs on a roof at that school. That's hot or cold there, or hot liquid or cold, it goes up the roof and distributed throughout the school. It's up on the roof.
I think Wayne's point about, you know, we're still kind of shaking and trading and trying out what things are gonna fall off and what aren't. It's a tremendous learning process, and I know Jerry and I and the others, we've talked to people at other communities that have built schools, and the biggest issue is the HVAC system. It like takes like five or six years to even get the thing functioning the way it's supposed to function.
This is not something that's only in our project.
Right.
Every project ever, it's always the HVAC system. And the balancing of it and getting all of the wrinkles worked out, because these systems are very, very complex.
I think part of our challenge is finding companies, they may say they qualify to work this way, but we're finding out many times hard where maybe they're not qualified, is it could be a shooting. And we find companies that are fully qualified.
You can actually get a small, small scale picture of that if you go around your own home with a thermometer, put a thermometer in every room, check the temperature in every room, and find out that they're all the same. Everything is a little off, up and down, and when you get something as complex as a school, a major building.
So, I guess I finished my group of problems saying, the last sentence, it's a little mundane, but it doesn't change from day to day. Clean is clean, safe is safe, warm is warm and dry is dry. They don't change. It's a daily challenge. You can high tech all you want, but clean is clean. If it's safe, it's safe. If it's warm, it's warm and dry is dry. So, that's a daily challenge. It doesn't go away, it doesn't change from year to year. It changes from season to season, man. It's always there.
And I'm glad you didn't add pool.
Well, I'm trying to find, I got a little piece to put.
One question, dry is much better.
One question on the dry is dry. You know, we have had a few leaks at the high school, middle school. Are we a hundred percent set there, or are there still?
I can answer, Wayne, you can answer.
Because we did have a leak recently in the, in the, in the straights, strata boxes.
How challenging this is, is that one company's response, oh, illusion, of one company, two hundred and seventy thousand square feet, that's white rubber. This company buys skylights from a supplier. They mount them on a framework, they mount them on a roof, and we recently found that one of the skylights is leaking. They're causing damage inside the building. So, there's some of this going. Well, who's open? The skylight guy owns it. The roof put it on. Who covers it? You know, call them on it, you water test it, it's pretty, still within that framework, but it's not mine, it's yours.
But that's fixed, that area is fixed as far as we know?
It is.
Well, we might know it in the next two days.
Well, that's, we recently, we believe it was, and I think you're right.
We've got a big test coming tonight.
Right, tonight, tomorrow's.
At all the schools. We can happily straight business.
Hopefully, the little school will get no leaking.
At least in the new block. Put on the roof.
That's true.
And I do want to just add, you know, the leak is minimal.
No, I know.
And the interior damage was minimal.
But it might look, maybe it looks worse than.
It's actually been fixed.
It has?
The interior worked on last year.
Because it aggravates the area.
It was aggravating me too. We got, we actually had a painter come out and he repaired it. Within forty-eight hours, he did the work. It was very expensive. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just a little comment about Wayne's here. You know, it's no secret how committed Wayne is to his work. Does a wonderful job, extremely, extremely committed to his work. That's his staff. The, the middle high school campus has really, I think, opened the eyes of a lot of us in what its deeds are, the sophistication of systems. And Wayne has really borne the brunt of a lot of that, and it has required a significant amount of his time to be dedicated on that building as we learn, as we grow. And I think we're in, you know, we're continuing to learn, but I think the direction, kind of the trajectory has been a positive one. We're learning and it's been, you know, I think we're coming to a good place. You know, the growth has been, and I think that's a good thing. I don't think it should go unnoticed, though, that because so much of Wayne's time and effort has gone to the middle school and the high school, a lot of other people have had to assume responsibility at our elementary schools. And that includes the principals of each of those three schools, as well as the custodial staff. They have had to go without Wayne, so to speak, to a degree that I don't think that they were used to, because so much has been consumed at the middle high school. So, I want to just acknowledge that, you know, it's been a kind of a district effort to make sure that the resources were put toward making sure that our beautiful new middle high school has come to an operational place that we wanted to be at. But that there has been some challenges and some extra energy put into the elementary schools, and that effort is appreciated. Not a day goes by where it's very rare that Wayne and I don't have a conversation about something that's going on at the middle high school. And again, he's very dedicated and seeks to really provide the best learning environment in all of our schools. I just, I want to publicly acknowledge that.
I get very few comments from other students about elementary saying, you never hear. But we have a rapid reaction. Something happens, I don't get aware of it. Try, try to treat it like very soon the same, the same plane, you know. It does consume a lot of time. It's high tech. The job used to be like this, now it's come like this, a couple of years, and it's up and down. It is very, very challenging to stay up with. I crammed a support, but it's.
Wait, one more. I do have, you know, this.
Now that Wayne, Michael has pitched in an awful lot here.
With Wayne here, and he may not be able to answer this question, I know there's been issues at the high school gymnasium with the shot clock. I don't know if you've been, right, we looped on that.
I think we got that figured out.
Okay.
About two weeks ago, I imagine. TBC.
So, we got that, as far as we know, it's fixed?
The horns and the lights and the shot clock.
Excellent. He wasn't even prepared, he can even answer that question.
Part of it is, part of it is finding the right person.
To fix, yeah.
And you say, well.
It's not specific, something to fix.
Yeah, so when you're still here up there, well, it's out of work. Other schools, we know we own. There, it's like, is it another one? Is it extended one? Sometimes it is. We save money by pursuing extended ones. That's covered for three and five years.
I just wanted to add to that, Wayne and his staff, I always say this, and the principals, obviously, and everybody that works at the schools does a great job. Wayne explained it on several times, we don't just have the high school, middle school campus, we have four schools to have. I see it's going forward, two biggest challenges, really. There was a lot of challenges, various ones, I think, at the HVAC at the middle school, high school, and maintaining the outside of the buildings. The inside of the buildings, the entire time I've been here, it's never been an issue. They always look great, they always look sparkling, clean. But the outside is a challenge.
Well, those new fields we've added, we've added tremendous amount of field space.
I think, John, if you can continue to support Wayne and complement him with the outside services that we had last year, that was, they did a tremendous job.
Really did.
The problem is, I don't want to see it get to where, the point where it was at, that it was so bad that, you know, we had to come in and make a major effort to get it to look good, you know what I'm saying? So, if we can face it out. Our plan is, it's a good question, and I think our plan, because we were starting that landscaping service with the new fiscal year, the summer was the first, we have four, I think, maintenance periods with them scheduled. And what that, what we kind of timed that with is kind of the preparation for the opening of the school, a fall cleanup, kind of a spring cleanup, and then the so-called graduation preparation. So, now is that cycle, and we've done, we've done two of those. It has worked very well. What it allows our, our two staff to do is kind of fill in between those big major cleanups.
Because just the weeding alone, it's just a one.
Do you know all the plantings, the trees, the plants, the shrubs, the flowers?
But that, the contractors did it. We were very, very pleased with them. So, that is the plan going forward.
So, let me show you my refract omelet. What this is, I'll give you, I'll give you a quick panel. All the schools have AD frees, what we call, they keep things more free. All the liquid that flows around, that is, it's, it's, it should be thirty-two to thirty-three percent of the light. So, what this is, I can measure it, I brought some, some.
Is that vodka?
It's not vodka.
It's a different color.
Tequila.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is the liquid in all, in all piping, heating included. What this, what this will show is the strength of the AD frees of Lipo in the emission. I'm sure, hold it, hold it to the light. Should tell you the percentage of that being Lipo?
I don't think an English lady's gonna understand this, I'll look at it, but.
It's not a collard. So, Wayne, would you have to actually get a sample of the water that's flowing?
It's a liquid.
Should say, where do you get that sample from?
How do you get it? I have it in my home, my own heating system.
There's, there's.
Like a little leak valve?
Yeah, that's it.
They drain a little bit out and tells us whether it is some of your.
Can you see it? Should see like thirty-two percent. It's the line on the left.
The car as well.
Left side. When there's protein, when there's that thing, when there's, should be thirty-two percent.
I can see shadows.
I say Jerry thinks he's a pirate on a ship here now. The best toy ever, though, was the infrared, the thing that, that the temperature thing. That thing was good.
That and the Geiger.
That was before you had the Geiger. It was like a Geiger.
Right on the table. Right in front of Jerry. Stop looking.
Thirty-two percent is.
And was that, was that for interest of the grants, or?
No.
Because I know a lot of times you bring things that you got through the grants from the MI. Yeah, that's excellent.
So, he says, what's the, what's the, what's the AD freeze in your, you're putting, you're heating included.
How often do you test that?
It shouldn't stay like that for a long time. Questions, comments?
Good job, man.
Much.
I always come, no one ever asked me any questions.
Well, I asked you a million during the thing, you answered them all. You even answered the shot clock question.
Wayne, it's nice to see you appear to be so calm and relaxed. I haven't seen Wayne in a couple of years. It's the black ball. Are you on that? Are you on the black ball?
How do you get through today?
He's sounding like a quack.
It's not good to drink.
It'll kill you.
Did he see vert?
Anything else?
No.
Good job, Wayne.
Continues to have been here eighteen, continues to be, this dynamic, it just, it changes so quickly, and you know, staying up with it, it just energizes you.
It's good to see you still high tacking that enthusiasm.
One year, the law will be over.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I think we'll go back to regular form here and continue with business. S O B A, S S P C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing, I wanted to follow up on you from our last meeting on the, on the water fountains at the foot speed at the middle high school. There is, you know, we're continuing to just, you know, again, it's one of these things that sounds silly, the water, the water fountains, but they are very complex, they're very high tech, very sophisticated, with sensors inside of them that allow for students to fill water bottles, as opposed to just getting a drink and going, which is, we're finding that like, like other systems in that school, that they require a pretty significant maintenance in one of those maintenance items, it's filter changes. So, we did have some work done that would bring a little bit more balanced pressure in to some of the water fountains, particularly in the gymnasium area, where pressure spikes were fluctuating and the water pressure would, you know, when a student would go up to the water, or anybody would go up to the water bottle, try to drink it, sometimes edible, sometimes it's high, and we think we've resolved that piece of it. But what we've since learned is that what's contributing to that in other parts of the building are these filters that are installed. And so, we learned that they need to be changed more regularly, not more regularly than I think I would like, because there is an expense to that, and there are, there are sixteen water bubblers throughout the building, each of which has three components, so there's a kind of a handicap accessible bubbler, a stand bubbler, and this water pump fill. So, it's more, there are forty-eight changes that have to occur, and it's, it's, it's complex. So, we've kind of gotten ourselves onto a maintenance schedule now with having a supply of these, the filters aren't just, we don't just go to Home Depot and buy them, they're a special order. I've asked Wayne and my power to kind of, when we now get this next shipment in, which is due any day, and I was actually supposed to be here last Thursday, but that we will have a kind of a reserve on hand so that we can kind of replenish that as we go. But we've been told that North Reading has particularly hot water, and because of that, it kind of, the filter, I guess more, I guess way to describe it, being more rapidly, it needs to be changed more frequently, because it's more, it's more rapidly absorbing some of the minerals that, you know, you might not if they had softer water, is how I understand it. So, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing item, it has our attention, you know, we're working to resolve it, but again, it's, it's one of those things that we kind of learn as we, as we go on, so to speak.
Water thing is true. I've had, I've had issues at my house. The town does have hot water, so that's an issue, there's a lot of minerals, a lot of iron that has, has to be filtered out, so.
That should change soon with MWR.
That's correct.
We, we investigated the possibility of eliminating the filters.
We did, and that, that did not work well for us. We did that actually quite early on, and what it did was, it, the filter, I believe, also helps to balance the pressure of the water coming in, and when it was out, when the filter was out, the pressure was too high, and that caused other complications. That was, that was explored as kind of a cost savings option to not have the filter.
We actually had to.
People. People watered it. Also, I can say, John, this, you know, this is just my recollection, it's not documented. My recollection is that there was a problem with those water bubblers from day one. So, all of this is about filters and everything that may be true, but I don't think they ever worked right. Well, so to that point, I'm not so sure I disagree. And part of what I wrote in my report to you was that PMA representatives have been working with me, because I, I have, I have documentation going back to at least September of two thousand and fifteen.
I think before that.
And you could be right, that, you know, I didn't exhaust an awful lot of time, but that took, that was sufficient for PMA, for me to be going back to September of two thousand and fifteen, identifying that I thought there was a problem with water. So, they're working with me too, and with Gilbane. Yeah, I'm not so sure I disagree. In fact, I think I agree with you, I think that there is more to it than this. But we have an independent plumber now that's doing our work, contracted service, and I met with him last, Wednesday. He seems to think that this pots issue with the filters and all, will, you know, more regularly changing them will, will have a positive effect, whether it's the solution or just.
There is still some non-option.
As of today, there's no change today from what you folks knew on Jerry and I. Largely because, largely because the pot, we haven't been able, we have, we ordered the, we ordered the pots right away, we just have to receive them. They were due to be in last Thursday, but as of this morning, they hadn't arrived. So, once they come, the work can begin to, to have them all operate. That's the goal, obviously, but no, they're not, nothing is different than what it was two weeks ago.
So, those ones in the auxiliary general working?
Yes, the ones in the auxiliary general, the ones we had had prior to this location, they're, yeah, they're working, they're, they're working the best in the building. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It just seems to me that, since I drink the water and always have, straight out of the tap, without a filter. And I suspect it seems that you were saying, that maybe we don't really need filters.
Yeah, because Jerry, if you make a point, you might want to make a comment.
Drinking that water on the tap, you're only thirty-eight.
He's thirty-eight years old, he's a.
Actually. I'm a lot older than that. I don't know if it has gotten to some.
Yes. The water clip makes your point in two thousand and nineteen, if I was going to plan, we will have MWRA water, which is of much higher quality than we are.
Water. We can, as good as water.
As you can get.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Benard.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is school for North Reading High School. Up at our last meeting, we've done some further investigation on that, and we want to just work off of what we had before, or you want to present something further?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think at our last meeting, there was some question around the school committee's role in approving or denying, in acting upon a proposed farm travel experience for students. And so, I think between, Mrs. Coffey, I don't want to speak for you, but I think between your conversation with the representative from the Mass Association of School Committees and my reaching out to the school committee's attorney, I think their opinions seem to be somewhat in sync, that the school committee does, you know, it's advised to take action, okay, to either approve or deny a trip proposal, but also to have an understanding that obviously there's a liability, and I don't think that came as any surprise to anyone, there certainly is a liability for a day field trip, but we make sure that we have precautionary steps undertaken, and I think, you know, with working with a third party vendor like this trip does, as well as if this trip is approved, it would be the third time, we would have additional insurance. Michael, am I correct, that the trip to Scandinavia this April is the second, where we've actually asked for additional insurance to further strengthen our position. But, you know, it doesn't mean that something couldn't happen, and the district or the town wouldn't be liable, I mean, that's always, I think, the case, but I think we have positioned ourselves well that we have good experience with EF as the vendor, and I think the additional insurance, which Michael did a lot of work a couple of years ago with our town's insurance category, and I, and it was on the recommendation of the policy we are now using, it was, it was on their recommendation, correct? So, so I think that's the best information I have for you, it would be my preference, and quite honestly, I don't think I would come to you with a recommendation for a trip if the committee weren't willing to act on it. I think it's, it's appropriate action, is that the committee takes some, some sort of form of voting to approve or deny.
For purposes of discussion, I will make a motion to approve the high school trip to China for two thousand and eighteen, April two thousand and eighteen, for purposes of
Second, for the discussion.
I, you know, I have a little trepidation about this, but, you know, speaking with Mr. Benard and others, it's clear that even if we approve this tonight, if issues came up related to the safety of, potential safety of our students and staff and chaperones, we have the ability to cancel the trip. I also know that the company works closely with the State Department, EF. So, I feel comfortable that if something were to happen between today and, you know, January of next year, that there is an opportunity for us, the trip could be canceled, postponed, and my understanding is those committed, who've paid, wouldn't lose their money, or at least lose all of them, correct? Is that?
Yes, so, well, so I don't, I don't want to misrepresent, but I, you know, I don't know off the top of my head what the reimbursement policy would be, when students would forfeit whatever percentage of all of their fees, you know, depending upon the time it would be canceled. I know that there is a fee structure on that, and what, so many days out, and what that reimbursement is. I will tell you, quite candidly, that in the past even, when we endorsed these trips, and things have gone on in the world that had caused me concern, it was two years ago in France, regardless of where we were traveling, it was just the fact that we were going to be sending students overseas, I remember distinctly having a conversation, you know, pulling the advisors together and the high school principal at the time, and saying, okay, what's, what's the plan here, I'm getting a little, you know, concerned about. And the, the advisors, Mr. Nocie being one of them, that you met a couple of weeks ago, provided me with a view into what EF's response, they have a very, I mentioned they work at the State Department, they have a very good response for me. And I know, this is a reality, you said, your daughter has traveled, so she's experienced that. They have a very good plan in place, if, unfortunately, that while they're traveling, something were to occur of a nature that, you know, we don't even discuss, but, you know, some sort of an emergency nature. So, you know, I think it's fair to say to you that I would certainly, and I think it would go even beyond January, you know, I didn't like what was going on, you know, I'd be, I'd be going to the high school and saying, look, I really think we need to rethink this, or we at least need to talk about it, because I've done it already. And I also can tell you that in my peer group, often, every once in a while, I'll get an email, like, you know, has anybody endorsed a farm travel trip, like, you know, what are you doing? You know, they'll ask each, we'll ask each other, like, are you concerned about, are you taking any different actions based on something, an event that might have happened? And so, that occurs too, so we kind of, you know, talk to each other. So, I would be very mindful of that, even up until the day we left, regardless, you know, of what the reimbursement policy would be, you know, that's something we would, I'd figure that out.
Well, and before, before parents sign up their children, they're gonna know, they're gonna know what the financial issues are.
It's a very.
I'm more concerned with the safety, I guess.
Absolutely. It's, that's powering.
But so, based on my personal view and other, I'm going to support the trip tonight. As long as, because I know that the company is not going to just send, and we're not just going to send our kids off somewhere knowing that there might be an unsafe situation. So, I'm comfortable with that.
The note that we got back from the council.
Yes.
There's a couple of lines here. You would want to, you would want a contract with a third-party provider that has insurance provisions and documentation. That was in the proposal, that there would be that.
Correct.
But we are not doing the contracting. As I understand it, we're not doing the contract. We're not going to sign a contract with the expedition group.
The contract, I believe, is between the student and the third-party vendor. But I really, yeah, I really, I'm not, I can't look into the either and say I'm a hundred percent certain that one of our chaperones hasn't signed something with EF. I'm not aware of that, but I don't believe so.
And there's another line. Make sure you have an agreement in place with appropriate protections in place and representations needed from the trip provider.
That I do have. I have those actually, as well as our own additional insurance.
But we don't have, we're not doing an agreement. The district is not signing on that.
I'm not, you are not.
Not correct. The district is not signing on that. So, if we approve this, are we becoming, in essence, this is a attorney type thing, are we becoming party to it? And I think that in the event that we are not going to have a contract with the provider, that our policy on foreign travel allows us to permit advertising for travel purposes within the established policy for distribution of information within the system group. And I don't think I have any problem with allowing the advertising and allowing the distribution of information. But I do have a problem with our moving to approve the trip, especially with the information we got back from MASC, that if we're not signing the contract, then we are not covered, I think, by the indemnification and insurance provisions. But we are getting liability. And I don't, I don't think that's a good position for us to be in. I, I'm afraid I'm not in favor of approving the trip. And I don't have a problem at all with approving advertising of the trip. Advertising, passing information around in the school, that it's there and using the system to let parents know that it's available.
But then that, doesn't that contradict the overnight one? Because it says that we have to approve in the overnight state. With the fact that we're going above and beyond to get this additional liability, then aren't we proving that we're accepting responsibility after something does happen?
That's what Liam said. It's basically that we need additional protection.
But I think we have it, right?
We do have it. Only we've opted for it.
Right. We have additional insurance from Maya, correct?
Correct.
That saying that we're.
If we're getting that insurance, we're improving the trip.
Right.
By us getting that insurance, right? We're essentially approving the trip, all right?
Well, we have it there, whether we use it or put it, you know, or not. It's there, available to us.
Right, so.
But if we're paying for it, if the kids are paying for that additional insurance, then we are, as you said.
Well, that doesn't happen, that's only happened for a trip.
Correct, right.
But going forward.
Correct, yeah. That's an annual renewal, so you have time to revisit that.
I think that the other provisions of late-night, overnight trips, student travel, I think those are really not applicable to this, because those are schools that organize trips where we control what's going on.
But there's the point was.
We are contracting like Washington. I think we actually connect.
But we are, but that's a tour company, like, I think it's the same thing. The parents, I think, contract directly.
That's, again, another case then that we should be, you know, we haven't been as diligent as we should have been perhaps.
Even going like the trip to Quebec last year, I don't remember. I think the teacher may have actually planned all that out, the Quebec trip last time, right?
Fortunately, all of them seemed good.
I'm reading this a little different, but I'm reading this as Liam's saying that you're better off having a third-party provider than allowing the teachers to rearrange.
I agree with that.
Because everything will fall on them.
Right, so, it says, one committee would be taking on one responsibility or liability when it proves the plan executed by the teachers rather than a third-party provider. So, here we have a third-party provider, right?
That has to be done.
The third-party provider is the one that's making the arrangements.
A third-party provider. So, why are we attaching ourselves to that?
Well, the option is either approve or not approve. If we don't approve, what's that mean?
We're still going to rely on it.
What's that mean? Does that mean that if the committee doesn't approve, they're not going? They're not going.
I would not, yeah, I wouldn't send them. So.
But then, I mean, then that, then we're making a decision that we're not allowed to go on a travel, because, I mean, we have to follow suit or any overnight travel.
So, the Washington trip could never, would have to be canceled.
Or you'd have to make different arrangements.
Or even the hockey one that they go to.
Well, those staff would make our arrangements.
Yeah, but it's still overnight.
No, we, no, but.
I think that would be this policy that's going to change.
Right.
But there's still potential liability, if you should. You approve them going down to the cake, whether it's in their parents' cars or it's in the bus or whatever it is.
We had an issue with, there was no liability. We had an issue with the student council thing several years ago. Remember, there was a drinking issue, and some of our students were involved several years ago. There was no liability, but parents had to get out there and pick up their kids and bring them home. So, but again, there's liability issues. Not one of yours. But, you know, there's always going to be liability issues. I think, to me, the whole thing is confusing, what the instructions we get from MASC, yeah, MASC, and then from Liam. I almost see them as, I almost see Mike Gilbert from MASC saying, you know, you can approve it, but we kind of recommend you don't.
Yes.
And then Liam's, right. And Liam is saying, almost go ahead, approve it, it doesn't really matter as long as you have that extra insurance. So, it's like we're almost getting conflicting, you know, Mike Gilbert saying that.
My problem is.
Like, from Mike's perspective, he said, the minute you say yes and it's a formal vote, then we're saying that we support this.
We're endorsing the trip.
Well, see, the problem I have with Mike is that it looked, it sounded to me like his opinion was more directed at the potential conflict, and it's addressed in our policy, by the way.
And I talked to him, and that wasn't it.
You sure?
That wasn't it.
Because it's actually addressed in our policy about having, you know.
Because I said to him, I said, can you tell me exactly why you're saying that? Because the minute you say yes, you're endorsing it, and there's liability. So, I said, well, there's, we are seeking other insurance.
The other option is there's no trip.
Right.
The other option is there's no trip. And I think we assume some liability on every trip that happens.
We know, travel, something will occur, our staff are there. We're still not, there's still no level of liability there, you know.
Could certainly be implied. Could certainly be implied if you have not running teachers, running the trip, taking the kids, whether we endorse them, don't endorse them. We can't, you can't always just, you know, discharge liability.
But see, this is the problem. A foreign, a foreign travel plan then has to be rewritten, because it says we won't endorse the trip. And by voting aye, we're endorsing the trip, right?
Well, the problem with the policy, Mel, is on JHFB.
Yeah.
What's the definition of a school-sponsored trip?
But JHFB doesn't recur, doesn't apply to foreign travel at all.
I understand, but I'm sorry, there's no definition of school-sponsored trip.
Well, that's why when I threw this out to the listener, many districts have said they've had to redo a lot of their policies to reflect these changes and these suggestions.
Because the JHFB, although it doesn't mention foreign travel, it talks about overstationing field trips and excursions that take place overnight.
Right.
And again, there's no definition of a school-sponsored trip.
But we specifically have a policy on foreign travel, JHBA, which says that we will not endorse, sponsor, or assume responsibility for any travel plan, but will permit advertising for travel purposes within our established policies, the definition of the system.
So, the question is, by saying yes, approving it, are we endorsing it or are we just approving it?
We're allowing the trip organizers to advertise it to the school.
Under JHFA.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, if you're going to follow JHFA, it would be that no actions required.
Yeah.
And again, I mean, I assume this guidance is from MASC, so it kind of matches what Mike Gilbert.
So, what we could do is we could decide that no actions required, and that the trip can go on, and we will allow the advertising for travel purposes.
How do you feel about that, John?
John's saying he's not going to allow the trip to go for we are.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with that. Not to put you in a bad state.
This point is also, even though it's foreign travel, still, we'd have to do it under vote because it's an overnight thing.
Our policies are conflicting, that's the issue.
They're not conflicting until you get to foreign travel. Foreign travel is defined, and it says we're not approving these trips.
But when the foreign travel involves taking a school day off. Or overnight. Or missing, then.
The late-night overnight comes in, that's the point.
But I don't have a problem with it either way. I would approve the travel.
Same here, but I thought it would be against our policy, JHFA.
But we're trying to pass. We approve these trips for.
Okay, so we can say under JHFA that we'll allow them to advertise, but under JHFB, we have to say that it's okay that they can spend overnight. So, okay, you can go to China, but you have to be right back. Don't spend the night there.
Go overnight.
This isn't the first time this trip has occurred, right?
Foreign trip, no, we've had them every year, I think.
So, you approved it every year?
Right, but we've, there's been, over the last few years, the Mass Association of School Committees has been telling committees that we shouldn't be approving this kind of trip, because it then puts more liability on the school district versus on the parent and the student.
So, but wouldn't that make more sense to, look, I think you said the policies need to be revisited.
I think the policies.
And not hold up something that is already in the works.
Right, yeah. Cliff's point is, though, is that we're violating our policy if we approve it. I'm saying, well, if we violate the policy every year. Violate one more.
You're making it through the red light.
I don't think there's any question of JHFA applies as foreign travel.
Right.
So, it applies. The question is, Janine pointed out, what do we do with JHFB that doesn't apply? I've always, you know, I've always taken the position it's our policy. We can change it. So, but the other policies don't apply related to foreign travel, because foreign travel, we don't.
I don't know about that, Luca, because they're going overnight.
It's moved. Well, it doesn't say except for foreign travel.
Well, I mean, do we have to approve everybody overnight? Then they're just absent. That's the parent's choice to keep them absent.
A day trip to Quebec.
Do you have to approve that?
I mean, you could use that United States, United States to the overnight. And is that clarified? And we just default to the foreign travel for our. It's almost like you could say, US, the late, you can almost say that the foreign travel policy, policy JHFB does not apply.
But it does.
See, I didn't get that. But if you think it did, then maybe expand the foreign travel policy to incorporate some of the provisions of the overnight travel.
Or you could say continental US.
The overnight travel policy would apply if you permit it, but you're not permitting foreign travel. You're not endorsing, sponsoring, or assuming responsibility for your travel.
What's the difference between endorsing?
And approve, that's a question.
You might not like that they're going to China. That might not be the place you want them to go. Is that, you're not endorsing where they're going?
Jerry, what do these words mean?
Well, I think it's fine line. I think endorsing is a more forceful action than just approving. You know what I'm saying? You're encouraging or you're, you know, you know what I'm saying? Encouraging.
So, I mean, we need to either have, we need to have the word approve in there, I think. If we're not going to, it should say we'll not approve. If that's how we feel. I mean, I feel this policy really limits any sort of international travel for our high schoolers.
Me and Janine, I mean, me and that Julie, I think.
I think it's.
It doesn't. Actually, you know, in all honesty, in all honesty, I would refer to JH, I would refer to JHFA and say that, look, this obviously, this policy, John, obviously contemplates foreign travel by students. But what it says is the school committee is not going to endorse, sponsor, or assume responsibility for any travel plan, but will permit advertising. So, it basically, we said, look, in reference to this policy, we're going to allow the trip, okay? We're not going to approve it, we're not going to endorse it, we're not going to sponsor it. And therefore, by us not approving it, then JHFB doesn't apply.
Yeah, but John says he's not going to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying this, John's option is. Any other simple thing would be just a motion.
And.
And comply with the overnight policy.
And review the policy for future endeavors.
If they did it completely within.
Because you know what? Julie brings up a good point, though. You could read this so that we, as long as we don't endorse it, sponsor it, assume it, doesn't mean we can't approve it.
Well, so approve is to sanction officially, to ratify, to confirm. Endorse is to support, to back, to give one's approval to. So, endorse means to approve, so it's.
But I think, I think approval, it may be that we can approve this. It doesn't say that we have to, that we can't approve it. It says we're not going to endorse it, sponsor it. Endorse it means to push it, to promote it, more or less. Whereas approving it is just saying, okay, we're going to allow it.
We're allowing it to happen.
Yeah.
So, I think we could allow it. Yeah, I think we can.
I think we can allow it.
Because it doesn't specifically preclude us from approving it.
But I would ask that moving forward, we.
Take a look at it.
That whoever's on the policy.
That's a good point. Endorsing versus.
Janine, me, Mr. Benard, and we fix these policies.
I think we can approve the trip under JHFA.
And Julie already has some samples if she kept them. Kenny's one, of course, never sent it.
We just approve it.
We could say no.
If somebody wants to take a trip during vacation, you're going to keep Julie's family from going to Disney World?
No, it's got nothing to do with Julie's family. It's got to, if it's, if it's, there are school personnel involved in the trip and looking at it as a.
Yeah, go ahead and advertise, but if you pull your kid out, we don't want to know about it.
I thought they used them in school dance.
So, I think you could approve it.
Yeah, but like, I'm going to pull out my daughter to go on a school trip.
Don't say that for John.
If you want to, if you want to use semantics.
Very important trip.
If you want to use semantics, approve it under JHFA and then require them to comply with JHFA.
My motion is just to approve it and that's, I'm sticking with my motion.
I agree.
And then throw it to the policy subcommittee to deal with it.
And the policy subcommittee needs to deal with this.
Yeah, if you like this, if you like the idea of foreign travel, but feel like your policy has to be in the union, if you'd like to tighten it up, maybe that's the way to go.
Who was on the policy committee in April eighth of two thousand thirteen?
I was. And I think that...
It's right here, Black, I was not the super get it.
And I suspect that, although I haven't gotten to banging that, I suspect that perhaps the wording of this is organized around the make it bill there. Which is N A S C's, which if you were to get stinging on something and we violated that, we'd be in more trouble in court, wouldn't we?
I put a hundred percent blame on Karen O'Keehan. She was on the policy subcommittee in April two thousand thirteen. Cliff is here, is here to realize all responsibility.
If you follow my policy, I won't mind.
I'm, I'm with Val. And make sure they comply with it.
Is there any further discussion? Do we have a motion still?
Yes. Motion by me and Janine seconded to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor? No.
That is form against all the law. Thank you. Can't come asking yet.
Geez, look at some...
Next item on our agenda is the before school childcare program. Thank you very much. So in your packet this evening, we have a memorandum with some comparable data and some information about our before school childcare program. Essentially, what's before you this evening is we kind of feel that it's time to look at the before school childcare rates that are being charged to families in need of a program. You know, what we really have done is, you know, analyzed the projected revenue and the cost of this program. And what's kind of happened is the rates have not been increased or looked at for a number of years, I think going back to about 10 years before we have had an increase. And in that period of time, you know, we've actually found it in the, in most recent years, becoming a little bit more increasingly difficult to make sure the revenue coming in from the program is covering all our direct costs. So essentially what our direct costs are is the staff that are involved in the program, supervisors and so forth. They do receive a small, you know, salary increase or rate increase annually. And the rates of that, of the program have not increased for a number of times. So what's happening is because of the way of looking at the rates, we are finding it a little more challenging to cover, to cover the cost of the program. And when we look at what the comparable or kind of going market rate is for these services in this area, by looking at some of the area schools that are included in the spreadsheet, we have found that our sort of average daily rate, if you look at it from apple to apple comparison and look at what these districts are charging families per day, we are significantly lower than what seems to be the going rate for these services. So I will say, I think the recommended increase tonight is really driven by cost and the comparable data that was researched was just to kind of verify and confirm where things are at to make sure we had an equitable, you know, an advantageous recommendation this evening. So essentially, what we have proposing this evening is that we, we increase rates, before school rates next year incrementally to ensure that we will certainly cover the cost of the program. It's important that we continue to do that and certainly get closer to what seems to be the normal or kind of the average daily rate by some of our area school districts. But even with the increase that we're proposing for next year, we would still be below what we charge in the area. And we would certainly plan with the proposed rate increase, we'd be feeling that they would cover our costs for at least the next two years. And we would kind of revisit this on a kind of an every other year basis and just continue to do the research and potentially come forward with another recommendation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. But I think we've just gotten to that point where it's time to kind of revisit it. We've had conversations about this with the administrative team. And, you know, we feel where it's just, it's that time to propose a, you know, a small increase to, to the before school childcare rates.
Not that it's bad to be the lowest, but we, we are so low, I don't understand how we can even afford to run this.
It's getting challenged.
I mean, it's, we're not even close to...
How long is the preschool, what's the timeframe?
I'd agree, it's mainly an hour. Does it vary between the late start and the early start school? I think that yes, the late start school is about an hour and fifteen minutes, with the before school is about an hour.
Yeah, just about fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Starts at seven thirty to whenever the bell rings.
Yeah.
So seven thirty, twenty minutes.
Yeah, but they'll be in the building at eight fifty five.
I hate raising, increasing rates or anything, but this is going, so if your child does five days a week, we're going from seventy seven dollars to eighty five dollars a month.
Correct.
Going up forty cents a day basically.
Yeah, it's not three eighty five a day to four twenty five.
They're going rate for daycare is about fifteen dollars.
This to me is...
We could go high.
I don't understand how we're avoiding that.
Let's not.
We discussed this quite a bit like when I, about what was a, we thought, you know, we'd like to go higher obviously for the obvious reason, but we thought, you know, it was a reasonable, reasonable misfact here too. You know, not hitting people too hard once.
Sensitive though, because the dreaded free full day K question has raised its head in over the past week and there's obviously a lot of discussion, a lot of interest in it. And we have a very high tuition rate for our full day K. So that makes me a little sensitive. You know that are related, it's just, but, but this is, this is prob, I would, I would bet if we look, this might be one of the lowest rates in the state.
If we do, if we do the increase, is it going to cut the budget down?
Not a piece figure. I think what you're going to do is you're going to accomplish two things. You're going to ensure that we're covering our costs, there's no situation where we're running a revolving account into the negative of the way as we approach the end of fiscal year, that would have an impact on, on the general fund budget.
I think.
And I think even though it's a small increase, baseline projections and some of the information we've looked at, we feel you could hold the rates at least the same for two years, two more years before we might have to look at it again.
Yeah, that's still a pretty good deal for parents though, if you're going to drop their kids off an hour and a half.
And now we don't...
Especially if you have the late school start, that's a metaphor.
In terms of the after school, we don't get involved in that at all, that's strictly to Y.
Strictly to Y, yeah.
We contract with Y. So they, they try to parents directly.
Right.
They rent our, they're basically renting our facility.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the new rate schedule for preschool care. Pre, before school care at elementary schools. And I do want, I just want to read the new rate so everybody's aware. For those who attend five days per week, it's eighty five dollars per month, going up from seventy seven. Four days, it's seventy two per month, far from sixty five. Three days is fifty seven a month, up from forty eight. Two days is forty dollars a month, up from thirty two. And those using one day a month is, one day a week is twenty dollars a month, up from sixteen.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a comment. There's so much flexibility with the before school program that if you need an additional day, it's so reasonably priced that people can very easily take advantage of extra days. And I think that's another bonus to keeping the, the rates as low as they are because then it allows for more flexibility for parents.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Next item on our agenda is the academic calendar for two thousand seventeen eighteen.
So Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a draft of the two thousand seventeen eighteen academic calendar. Believe it or not, I can tell you the questions that come into our office about when is graduation next year, when is certification next year? So we're going to get these questions very, very early on this year. So as soon as we get the calendar out for folks, I think the easier it makes their lives for whatever planning purposes they might need. So the calendar that's in your packet is not anything, there's nothing out of the ordinary in it. I think we've advanced the calendar accordingly. It has the same number of professional development days, either half days or a full day. We have the traditional start set for the Wednesday, for students for the Wednesday after Labor Day. That would be September the sixth of two thousand seventeen. So I don't think that there's anything particularly unusual to note. The one thing I would just call attention to maybe is in November, we are, we had a very successful Northeast Professional Educators Network, N P N Day, where we take advantage of Election Day for those districts that don't have school because they use their schools as polling places. We don't happen to be one of those, but we get to network with about two dozen other communities to offer professional development across the region. It's worked very well now for two years. We'd like to continue that again with two thousand seventeen, so. But beyond that, I don't have any other comments, but it's certainly some questions.
Before you vote, just curious, not going artificial material here. What date will we get out this year if there are no snow days? Do you know what the last day will be this year? Sorry to catch you up.
I'm going to say the twenty third was the date without the five.
Okay.
Can you still poll me on that? I can tell you in a second.
Because it looks like next year, twenty fifth is the last day, but if no snow days, it would be the eighteenth, took the five days off, so.
Oh, no, it would be the fifteenth.
This year, this year it is, let's see, if we back out one, two, three, four, five, it would be the twentieth.
Twentieth, okay. All right.
So now you started nineteen, yes, Monday, June nineteenth.
So next year would be Monday, June eighteenth.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen preliminary school calendar. Is preliminary or?
If you go on this tonight, this will be, I'll publish it tomorrow.
Okay, I make a motion to approve this, this school calendar for school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
We have no minutes. Budget update.
Great, thank you. This evening, the area budget update in your packet. This report summarizes financial activity through the month of December. There's not a lot of new information here that we didn't discuss and present last month. Things seem to be trending kind of the same and some of the same drivers of what's happening with our fiscal two thousand sixteen budget as we kind of enter the next quarter is staying relatively the same. We have a little bit of money into flexibility in special education, our district tuition budget. Again, that's because we exceeded the amount we had budgeted to prepay at the end of fiscal sixteen, so that provides a little bit of flexibility right now. We're still watching, you know, any changes in the needs for the students that may arise closely. We talk about utilities, expenses each month, and I think things right now seem to be in line with what we projected. You know, I do anticipate that electricity budget, you know, that's going to be pretty close to what we, our expenses will be pretty close to what we budgeted. Right now, we are projecting, there may be savings in the gas budget, but again, we're early in that, that heating season still with some several weeks and months to go, so we'll have to watch that closely. We talked a little bit earlier about Wayne, during Wayne's presentation in the past about the energy management contract by the logic, and we have seen some benefits there. Those monthly visits certainly are going well. We've talked about the challenges and the additional some costs that have arisen this year that somewhat kind of unanticipated that we are working hard to address. And those around H VAC related issues, there's been some plumbing related issues throughout the district. But particularly around the H VAC, trying to get a handle on the new campus and what the needs are. As Wayne alluded to earlier and as we discussed, we are, certainly have learned a lot over the last two and a half years. I think we are getting close to getting in a better place to, to understand what, what we need in terms of preventative maintenance and regularly quarterly visits and schedules and filters and valves and all the equipment that comes with that campus and the building. I think we're getting, I think Wayne made a good point where he mentioned about knowing who to call and knowing who to contact. I think we're getting the right people and then closer to getting the right people that know what to be doing on our particular, here to address, to address issues and as well as being more proactive. I think that's fair to say, but there is a cost to it. And right now, we're trying to manage that cost by shifting some things around within Wayne's budget. We've been able to do that, but still several months to go, so we have to pay attention to it closely. And, you know, certainly I think these things will have an impact on fiscal eighteen, on these, here, fiscal eighteen budget in the future. Food service program, we certainly closed out the month of December unfortunately with a net loss. December typically is a challenging month with program, it being with the vacation week and so forth. So we, we, though we didn't like to see that loss, the middle sold each day, we do analyze that, that information was slightly up from, from a year ago. The elementary levels are trending about the same, and the middle school and high school continue to be up compared to last year. So despite the loss in December, some of that was, was part of our forecast, our net loss year to date through the month of December is a lot less than where we were a year ago. I know it's about fourteen thousand dollars in the C E report, which I would say is encouraging signs. Projections that we will lose less than eighteen thousand for the year were at ten, but we had a very good, you know, typically the months that we do, August, January, March, May, the longer months with high operating days, so we'll, we'll hope to have good months there and hopefully minimize this loss and continue, the goal is to continue, we'll continue to break even. On the payroll side of the, of things, not much has changed. Most of our projections are certainly, our expenses and projections are certainly in line with budgeted ranges. I've mentioned it and certainly you recall in fiscal, the development of fiscal seventeen is a little bit less money and some of the teachers and paraprofessionals, some of the lines because of the, the higher and more aggressiveness in our attrition turnover savings that we included in fiscal seventeen budgets. So we're seeing those kind of less projected savings than we have seen in the past. We have experienced the trend of needing to appoint long-term substitutes for a variety of reasons kind of go down a little bit this year. I mean, that could change quickly, but we are seeing a surplus in the substitute budget projections at this point in time. Everything else seems to be very close to budgeted, budgeted ranges. So at that point, I'll, with that said, I'll turn it over to any questions on the general report.
Most please. It looks, you know, to me like we're all pretty tight.
Yeah, we're tight. We're, we're a lot tighter than we were then. I think we anticipated a little bit.
Almost here we find.
And we're seeing that, so, you know, yeah, we're, we're tight, so we need to be certainly very diligent.
Staffing, not this time, but it's, you know, it's going to make you?
No.
First time in a while.
I have some already though for the next meeting, because some may get laid on Friday.
There are already two, two sizable ones.
Yeah.
Just got to cut off. Subcommittee, up, the various school building committee met on January tenth.
There's still a punch list. Those items have been worked on as far as I know. We're still dealing with the drainage issue, which they're going to be back in here during April vacation. Don't know if they'll finish it then, but unlikely.
Why would, oh, nothing, sorry. I was going to ask why they really come back and...
They're, they're going to be here in April vacation, but it's, it's unlikely they're going to be able to finish it in just, just a week. Still dealing with them, negotiating with them and trying to figure out how we're going to repave the roads, but that's going to be done. Just going to figure out to what extent it's going to be done. I think we're going to look at trying to pave entire stretches of the roads where there's cuts that will be within... I think we're gonna look at trying to pave entire stretches of roads where there's cuts that will be within a certain distance of each other. HVAC, I'm still dealing with some issues with the HVAC, John.
Yeah, we are, but I think progress is moving.
And we're still waiting on some training on some of the audiovisual equipment as well.
We are, yeah.
We're gonna get back included. Uh, and the landscaping, that has to wait till the spring. There's a number of shrubs, a number of plantings that have to be replaced. Probably some long work to do as well, but that's not gonna happen until April, so. I don't know what else you had.
It was largely an executive session.
Yeah, it was, it was not...
The executive session.
The punch list is monetized, but we have, basically what we have is almost agreement on, I guess we have agreement on the scope that's left to be done. Uh, we are still talking about the price.
We have a monetized punch list, and we have retainage that exceeds two million dollars, so that, you know, we're, we're in good shape as far as having whatever's outstanding, not pink Bart until it's finished.
Actually, the price can be scheduled.
They gave you a schedule, a written?
No. No, but there needs to be an endpoint. And although an endpoint is not a schedule, it is one of the features of any scheduling. And we need to have that feature built in to any completion agreement or finalizing agreement that we have.
I'd just say the secondary school building committee and the administration have done a good job of holding their feet to the fight there.
I could, Mr. Val, this is just too, too quick, they've sub, they've, they've brought, actually, Mr. Nancy, you mentioned about the training. Patrick Daly and I knew a representative, actually, I think the president of the company, Hockers.
I understand.
Yes. At their request. So that, that could be an interesting, I think they want to try to, essentially, I think, yeah, I think they want to try to write some laws, make some things that we might be dissents of, that, that could be a stage in. We also, and this is latching through Michael's efforts, have, we feel that we're still lighting interior parts of the building more than we need to, but there's not a lot of light switches, as you all know. It's a programming issue, so we have something scheduled for the thirtieth.
Uh, yes.
Thirty first January, a technician to come out and help Wayne with that.
That's a proficiency process.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, I still think we're lighting too much of the building inside. We'd like to try to zone some things out, so we're not keeping, keeping like, no, I, I, no, that's, that's a different issue.
But in the main street, it might be one of the, I mean, there's so much light.
I think we could, you know, section, you know, we can, I don't, I don't know to what degree you can isolate, but we're gonna find that out. Um, so it's, it's just, it's something we're looking at again for open deficiency and the cost savings potential.
Athletic facilities committee met on January twelfth.
Just quickly, more plans presented for the bathroom slash potential concession stand at Arthur County Field. Another meeting on the thirty-first. There has been a place holder for a warrant item for the special town meeting, which will take place in March. And hopefully, on the thirty-first, January thirty-first, we really need to vote on a plan to recommend a selectmen, because if we don't, we're not gonna really be able to get them the information in time for the special town meeting. They have to review it in order for them to make a recommendation. So we really need to, I will say, there hasn't been a lot of satisfaction with the plans that have been presented. And there hasn't been much agreement at all in the plans presented. So it's gonna be a challenge to get this done for this year. I will tell you this, if it has to be pushed out for whatever reason, I know that the superintendent is a hundred percent in line with this. We will push to have the porta-potties in a different location. They cannot be where they were last year, or that still are, which is next to the concession stand, which they were horrendous during football season. I know Cliff would confirm that.
The concession stand, the food does go right through you.
That's true. But they just were, the ticket, one of the ticket takers tables, the ticket table was right there outside the, outside the porta-potties. It's not a good location.
But our goal was to still get...
Yes, our goal is to let it happen.
If, if we have to wait until June's on reading, what is the estimated construction?
Well, that's the problem.
That, that seems to be an issue. They're saying that we could potentially, based on getting the bids out and everything else, lose the whole season into fall, spring. I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, because they, because based on getting the bids out and stuff, we'd be starting construction right in the middle of the football season.
Right.
So we wouldn't be able to do that.
Plus, you gotta have the availability of contracts.
We, we have to continue to show that we're making progress toward a plan in order to satisfy the waiver that we have. We have to deal with our town health inspector and our town building inspector. As long as they're satisfied that we're moving in the right direction, we won't have any setbacks.
But sooner or later, we have to...
Right, sooner or later, we're gonna get them.
And the cost isn't gonna get out.
Right, the cost isn't gonna get out. Correct.
Correct.
Cost never go down.
No.
Subcommittee's scheduled meeting dates, North Ham Board Directors, January twenty-sixth at seven in North Ham Office. Finance planning meeting on the twenty-seventh at eight fifteen A M in Superintendent's Office. S S P C meeting, January thirty-first, five thirty in the District Learning Lab. Athletic Facilities Committee, the thirty-first at six thirty in the District Learning Lab. Athletic Subcommittee, February seventh at twelve thirty in the Superintendent's Office. And Evaluation Subcommittee, February thirteenth at three in the Superintendent's Office. Administration, please.
Chairman, I have nothing additional to share this evening.
Oh, yeah. Our response to business, February sixth, six thirty, regular meeting, Middle School presentation at the District Learning Lab. And February twenty-seventh at six thirty, regular meeting. And I will entertain a motion to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.